Microphone, Dave.
Councilman Tucker.
Here.
Councilman Kenahan.
Here.
Councilman Padula.
Here.
Council Vice President Giroux.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
There is a quorum. Minutes of the previous meeting resolved with the minutes of the September 6th and 20th and October 4th, 2016 town council meeting, September 20th, 2016 town council workshop and October 4th, 2016 executive session are hereby accepted.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Consent agendas, license application resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Those licenses that were approved were raffle permit for Thunder Mist Health Center, Christmas Bazaar permits for Sacred Heart Church, St. Joseph Church, Class F one-day permit for St. Anthony's Church, renewal for July business licenses, JFC Lawn Care, September business licenses, Eastern Home Improvement, Otful Expressions, INX Vapors, and there's a bunch for October, Cornbroke. So, all those licenses have been approved. There's 80 pages.
Correspondence, consent agendas, correspondence, resolve that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Again, there's a few applications in there and for reappointments, and those are later on on the agenda.
Yep.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. May I do have one quick question about licenses.
Okay.
If somebody is applying for a license out of their home, say it's gifts, potty planning and whatever, what inspections do they need? I got that question today. Do they need police and fire?
As a rule not, but we have them make that call, but as a rule not unless they're having customers come to their house.
No, this is like a potty planning where they would go to.
Unless they're storing something yet, basically.
There's an application they fill out, the business official just reviews it to make sure there's no storing, there's no people coming to. If there is, then they will make sure, they can say, you know what, we just want to look and make sure the area is good, but if it's just someone using their computer, using the address, there's no inspections required.
Okay, thank you.
But the only other thing, Dave, I want to bring up also on licenses while you're on it, we were running across this the past week, you have an existing business that goes out of business, another business comes in in the same location. Our minimum housing person thinks that they're already licensed when they're not, and the only reason why we found out, we got a problem down in Ward 1, where this certain individual is getting followed by DBR because they were asked to leave Warwick for running illegal business that they're not licensed for with the state of Rhode Island, and they moved their business to West Warwick and doing the same activity that they got thrown out of Warwick for doing. And when minimum housing, oh, no, the number it is, I'll say it, 27 River Street was registered as Webster's, but Webster's went out of business and now they moved in, I don't even know what the name is, but I mean, how are we, to me, it seems like it's awful difficult unless somebody tells you, like I was told, to keep an eye out on it. But I don't know if our minimum housing needs more training to know where her boundaries are or what she has to do, because DBR says they can go so far, but we have to have our minimum housing put in the violation and then they can step in as a statewide once they establish that they're running that illegal.
Why would minimum housing?
Hold on one second. Before you jump to an allegation of legal, illegal.
Right.
I think your question is whether or not the town has the right to go and inspect.
Right.
And the issue would be the inspection of whether or not that license that was given to the predecessor is still in effect, correct?
But.
But I think either police, fire, or housing.
But whose has jurisdiction?
It wouldn't be minimum housing, it would be a building official and zoning regulations and business licensing.
Or police or fire.
Police or fire, yep.
Should be an opportunity for police or fire to go with it because they could certainly check in the license too.
Okay.
But the fact of the matter is the town does have a right to check on the validity of the license that was issued to the predecessor. If that person's not on, there is no license there. Then next question is obviously the person that comes in, are they required to have a license to the town of West Warwick to do A, a business, or B, that type of business? So, that stuff can be addressed that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amplifier loudspeaker permit and theatrical performances, shows and exhibitions permit resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application. CBW 1 LLC, DBA Camp Bow Wow, West Warwick, Attention Wes Skorski, date October 22nd, 2016, location 3 Keyes Way, time 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Dogs need the music too. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Amplifier loudspeaker permit and theatrical performances and shows and exhibitions permit resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application. Thunder Mist Health Center, Attention Jennifer L. Gresslin, date October 22nd, 2016, location 125 Providence Street, time 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Town council meeting scheduled for 2017, resolved that the town council will meet on the first Tuesday of each month at 7:00 p.m., and special meetings will be in accordance with Article 4, Section 404 of the Town of West Warwick Town Charter. The town council may reschedule or add meetings as needed.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion?
Okay, well, can you guys?
Wow. He's got two meetings left and he don't care about us anymore.
Well, this was.
Well, it doesn't matter what the dates are, you just approve them and we change them as necessary.
Yeah.
First Tuesday. First Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
Why doesn't it list the second?
It never lists the second because it's considered a sewer meeting.
I need a hot copy of that.
Yes.
Long time ago.
We can go back. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Alcoholic beverages on town property sponsored by town council, resolved the town, West Warwick Town Council recognizes that there are certain town ordinances that forbid the sale and consumption of alcohol and alcohol products on town property, resolved that the town council, West Warwick Town Council recognizes that the River Point property shall be the subject of events to be held in conjunction with the West Warwick Community Appreciation Day celebration on October 22nd and 23rd, 2016, resolved that the West Warwick Town Council resolves to waive the enforcement of any related ordinance pertaining only to the sale of and the consumption of alcohol and alcohol products for the dates of October 22nd or 23rd, 2016, in order for alcohol and alcohol products to be sold and consumed within a controlled environment and monitored by the West Warwick Police Department in conjunction with the West Warwick Community Appreciation Day celebration.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Yeah, I heard Angelo, there's a rumor that Angelo wanted to put an amendment on this so we could have drafts here at the council. Is that right?
Well, as long as there's a tap at every station.
All right, there you go.
No, but we had this centennial, I mean, it was a great time, you know, nobody, we didn't have like a bunch of drunks, they enjoyed themselves, they had a glass of wine, a couple of beers, they had food, they had sandwiches. It's a great thing where the community came together, it was a great success, and as Ed will tell you, me being vice chairman, he was the chairman of that centennial committee, these guys, we all decided to do it again, what a good time everybody had, and I think it's a great thing, and I don't have a problem with it because it's run by the council and we're not going to do anything that's profitable, that people would forget about some rules and regulations and do it for money, let's face it, and this isn't about the money, it's about bringing the community together and everybody getting together and relaxing, having a beer and a glass of wine and just sitting back.
Yeah, and I talked to Fred today, and obviously, any kind of event where you have, you know, potentially not only hundreds, but, you know, over a thousand people, you want to be sure that the security is there, and, you know, he's assured me, we will have, we will have plenty of security there to watch out.
There'll be a strong law enforcement presence.
Yes, there'll be a strong law enforcement presence. I was advised to say that by our attorney.
Law enforcement sounds better than security.
Right, right. Any other questions?
So, I think it's, I invite everybody, bring your sleeping bag, bring your.
I hope it's nice like this.
Bring your long clothes. Hello, what? Well, you know, the kids, they'll lie down on the grass in their sleeping bags or something. But, yeah. But no, it should be.
Are you saying this is going to be an all-night, Mr. Giroux?
Oh, I don't know, it could be, it all depends on how long the bar stays open.
All I can tell you is October 22nd is like the busiest day of my life, I can't believe the amount of events that are going on that day.
Yeah, it's going to be a great time. We'll make time.
You've got Thunder Mist, which is going to go right up to us, and then there's just other fundraisers and everything else going on, it's just amazing. It's the amount of interference.
Starts at 4:00, and if you have any questions about the pumpkin race, call that man right there.
Yes. And again, Dave, will we have the golf cart to bring the elderly people to their seats and?
That's something I was just going to bring up, I know I was in charge of driving the gator around and picking people up.
Yeah, no, that was a great thing for the community, a great thing for the elderly people, we could bring them right where they were, bring them back to their cars.
No, I know that was one of my responsibilities for the centennial, it was kind of fun driving up and down the street, just picking people up, I felt like my uncle in Friendly Cab, but um, I will, I'll volunteer to do it again, I.
But they were giving them all Newport Bridge tokens instead of taps.
But, do we have the gator again, because I know that was donated, we'll have to check with Duffy.
I thought that was the town's.
You know, I'm sure, I'm sure West Warwick Country Club.
Oh, we got a golf cart, I'm sorry.
Golf cart.
We got a golf cart now, we don't need that.
And we have some from the sewer department too, we have two golf carts we could transport, we could use, I mean, you know, you need two or three of them, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Yeah, and I know there's.
Make arrangements to get them back and forth through our rec department, Fred, so we got, you know, because one is not going to be enough.
Yeah, I'll play with the governor on the golf cart so I can get them there faster, I don't want to.
Play with a couple.
We have, we have one more meeting, we have a meeting.
Yeah, the Thunder Mist is early in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon.
Fred, if there's still a farmer's market during the day, if we could.
Oh, yes, that's another thing I wanted to bring up too, we have a bus.
I'd love to use that bus to.
Council McKenahan's over here talking, you're still like the two muppets over there.
Oh, I know, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
There's no microphone, so you'll be hurt.
They don't all turn on. Oh, there you go, thank you. No, I was just checking with Fred, I know originally there was a chance that there may have been a farmer's market that day, but I guess it didn't work out, so, that's fine, there's still plenty to do, and I'm just happy that the weather turned around because it wasn't looking good two days ago, and now it looks cool, cool, windy.
They're watching a hurricane off the coast, so let's.
But again, like Councilman Giroux said, we have a bus, let's put it to use, I don't think it's been used yet because of the restrictions we got with.
I think personally the golf carts work a little better because you can get in and out everywhere and you can get down tight areas, the buses can be a little tight, especially with traffic stuff.
Well, I mean, if we need it, it'd be available, I mean.
But I would get the two or three golf carts, like I said, that gator worked phenomenal.
Yeah, it was perfect.
And the golf cart, I think, holds four, so. Yeah, no, I'd like, well, we'll talk about, let's.
Yeah, well, you guys got to meet and just bring it up, I mean, it's available, it's for us.
You just have to talk about it short notice, but liability and that type of thing.
Well, it's all by the trust, it's all insured.
Get a rider for the day.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
April 16, JAG Grant, 2016 DJ-BX-080281, resolved that the town council hereby accepts the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance that was awarded to the West Warwick Police Department, the JAG grant amount is $12,785. The JAG grant amount of $12,785 is to offset the purchase of a police vehicle as part of the department's capital improvement program.
I'll move that resolution.
Second.
Discussion, I know Chief's out of town, Major Knott, are you aware, I know I spoke to Baller on this, this is just a no-brainer.
Basically, they're going to, they're going to approve the grant and it'll offset, and his memo is attached.
Yes, sir, was it just a requirement of the grant that it be put on the agenda and voted on and accepted?
And I don't think we want to turn away money, so.
No, we've taken delivery of the vehicles. For a little history, for a little history, why we do that, I'm sure you know, just for the public, the reason why we do that is they need permission from us is because some of these grants have some hooks attached, you know, especially on personnel, where if you, you know, they give you money to put on personnel for the next, you know, three years, but after the third year, the town is on the hook for it. Some of them require matching funds, well, this one doesn't. I don't think it does.
It does.
No, I don't think it does. So, that's why we do it, just to make sure that we know exactly what the rules are of the grant and that we don't have any exposure that could later on cause, you know, a tax increase. Thanks, man.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Heating oil bid award, resolved that the town council hereby approves the bid award for heating oil.
I'll move the resolution for discussion.
Second.
Moved second, discussion?
Yeah, I seen that there was, what, three bids, I see an out-of-town I got at this time, but I don't see what the prices were on the other bids.
We actually, when we sent out the RFP, we targeted local companies looking for West Warwick companies to, that were willing to either match or beat the state MPA. We mailed it to the four local companies and we did not receive any bid responses from any of them. The only bid that we did receive was the one that you have in your documentation, so there was nothing submitted by the others.
It's just great because you have four oil companies in the town of West Warwick, and you figure they would bid in their hometown, and you got someone from Providence, not that there's anything wrong with that, but first preference is, is the businesses in town.
And it was.
So, I was just surprised that I didn't see what the prices were on those bids.
We were very surprised as well because last year, we actually had multiple companies that were looking to do business with the town for good reasons, and we felt to level the playing field, we would put out the RFP and offer it to any one of those four companies, and like I said, not a single one of them actually replied, and we did actually mail them.
That answers my question.
We mailed them within two days of the posting on the website.
No problem, I just wanted to see what was going on because I didn't see the other.
Very surprised.
No, I had that same conversation with John, I was specifically, I named three off the top, and I said, I can't believe nobody's put a bid in.
But you said the bid that, you know, was proposed to be accepted beat the state MPA?
Yes, it's, the numbers are actually within your documentation, slightly lower.
Did you reach out and ask them why they didn't bid?
I believe that Pam, Pam did reach out in the building office, and one of them actually referred to a problem that they're having with their mail, but it is posted on the website, it's on the state website as well as the town's website. One company, I believe, indicated to her that they did not meet the specifications, but I'm not sure what specifications, but none of them reached out to me since their conversation with Pam and asked me any questions either before or, you know, during the process or since then, so I'm not quite sure myself, I'm just going by what she had indicated.
And you can't chase them.
Well, no, we didn't, we did make every effort.
No, it's just, yeah, it's just, like I said, it's just that, you know, they pay, they pay taxes in town and they should have first priority into, you know, bidding on the process, and, you know, even if there were a few cents more, you know, I'm always.
What's the term on this bid?
We didn't actually put a term on it, the state MPA, I believe, is for just one year, so therefore we would look to do the same.
My daughter said 16, 17, did it say on there?
No, that's why I was looking, I didn't see any type of.
Yeah, the state MPA, I believe, was for a one-year, one-year period of time, so we were looking to mirror, you know, to mirror what the state actually had.
It just looks terrible when you see a Providence company come into West Warwick and pumping oil in the tanks for town hall, like I said, when you have four businesses in town, they pay taxes and could be pumping the same thing, not that they're making a ton of money, but it's just right here and it's, I don't know.
I was surprised, especially.
But anyway, that answers my question, I appreciate it.
Especially the feedback that we did receive last year, I was surprised that they didn't, you know, didn't present something or didn't at least, you know, reach out and ask any questions, like I said, it was on the town's website, it's on the state's website, it was mailed, mailed to each of the local companies, and.
And they were called.
We didn't get any responses.
Yeah.
Yeah, Pam, Pam reached out to them as well.
Also, the bottom line is, it looks like the state, the town is getting a good price.
We're getting better, we're especially matching the, it's doing better than the state MPA, because we could have just awarded based on the state MPA, but it was a non-local company, so we, again, trying to promote the businesses within the town, we wanted to give them an opportunity to either match or beat the state MPA, to, you know, to be able to give them the business, and unfortunately, these are results that we actually did, did achieve.
Good enough for me, any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Drain cleaning services sponsored by Council President Goslin, resolved that the town council hereby approves the bid award for drain cleaning.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, Dave, you were supposed to send me an email on this, you didn't.
Shame on you.
All right, in accordance with all the purchasing procedures, we went out to bid for drain services, on the cover letter that I gave you, it lists out the three companies that bid, and you can see by the pricing that TruX was the best pricing, and I'm asking them to award it to TruX.
TruX, and we've used TruX before, right?
Yeah, we've been using TruX, actually, the last time we went out to bid, the bid prices we got were higher than the second and third prices that we got this time, and we threw the bid out.
Yeah, I'll tell you though.
And redid it, and went with TruX because it was so much better.
Walking daughter, daughter, dreams of quad right up to the top, I'll tell you.
I get the same thing.
Bad, 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 bad.
We're on a schedule, they're on a schedule, right?
Yeah, once this is awarded, they'll be in here within, I think it's two and a half weeks they'll be in.
Wow.
I had to hold them up because I had to wait for the bid, so, so here's the bid.
Dave, some of these drains are chock full.
I know.
But we had a bid from last year, so they're on a schedule.
It ran out.
Yeah, but why couldn't they continue, that's what I was saying.
Because I had to go out to bid according to the purchasing requirements.
Yeah.
Well, they, the bid was right here, approve the bid, they'll be in there.
But in the future, we're going to make sure that it's, the bid is maintained so that it's.
Yeah, well, this is going to go all the way to 18, so before this one expires, we'll bid the new one. Yeah, so.
All right, any other comment?
Yeah, as soon as possible, get them out there because I know we're looking for problems.
I heard the same thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Tree removal services sponsored by Council President Goslin, remove, resolved that the town council hereby approves the bid award for tree removal services.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion?
Okay, same deal, we went out to bid for the tree services, and we got two responses, they're listed on the cover page and you can see the prices, okay, so, we're going to recommend that you award the bid to Northeastern Tree Service.
Third at a price.
They shop in a pencil, they wanted to get in there, so.
Very good.
And they're very, I've used them three times now.
Yeah.
Business and personal, and they do an excellent job, they clean up, they do good equipment, so, this is great.
Well, if you award this bid tonight, they're going to be in time tomorrow taking the trees down at the two cemeteries, so.
Okay, I recuse myself now.
What cemeteries?
The one up here near the FOP and the one in Natick.
Oh, the historic cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we have to maintain that.
I use myself.
Side conversations.
No, Giroux's just getting us all in trouble.
All right, any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Dave, let the record show that Ed reduced himself from the vote.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2016-14, second reading sponsored by town council.
You skipped a whole section.
As amended, an ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic.
You skipped a whole section, you skipped L.
Point, appointments?
No, she's on.
No, appointments, L.
K.
K, there's no K.
But I'm telling you, L and K are backwards on my agenda.
So, me too.
J, L, K.
J, L, K.
Not on mine, how could that be?
Well, it's got to be L, L is appointments, L is.
The issue of what you have in front of you is different than what we.
Would you want me to reinforce?
You've got to read how it is on the agenda, it's L.
L, appointment, reappearance, reappearance for the West Warwick Housing Authority, uh, resolved that the town council hereby reappoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Housing Authority for the town of West Warwick for a term to expire 11, 2021.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I move the name of Elizabeth Brunero, we all got letters from us, the certifications that she had, and she's the only applicant.
A second.
Any other discussion for Elizabeth Brunero? She's actually been on that board for a very long time.
Very.
And her husband was on it previous, correct? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Reappointment for the West Warwick Pension Board, resolved that the town council hereby reappoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Pension Board for the town of West Warwick for a term to expire November 18th, 2019.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, what do we have, three opening appointments for reappearance, three openings for appointment?
Yes.
So, we have three names that are already serving, we have, I'll move the name of Jeffrey Coslin, the name of Edward Fonseca, and the name of David Lamoy to be reappointed to the pension board.
Second.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointment for the West Warwick Tuxit River Authority, resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Tuxit River Authority for the town of West Warwick for a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I'll move the name of James Sullivan.
Second.
Any other, just James, any other names?
Just James.[1587.33]
Is James here?
James has been interested for a few times, so.
Yeah. Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance 2016 dash fourteen, second reading sponsored by town council, as amended, an ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance for discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
Who wants to explain it?
Well, Al is unfortunately in Florida because he's doing a major cleanup down there.
Yeah, it's the same one as the last week, but we just crossed out
Providence Street.
Providence Street.
Yep. The Providence Street, twenty-four, two-hour parking.
That's for further discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, that was up for further discussion.
Cochran, Winthrop?
As long as you guys are okay, we'll watch.
And this puts that in place, so it can be worked on by the traffic commission committee.
No, I think this will go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what
It's been a while for these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's four of them that you guys wanted.
Yep.
As long as the council and their wards are happy, what's here? I'll
Any public discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Town manager's report?
Just a couple things quickly. We have extended an offer to a new building official. He has accepted. This is George Demont from East Greenwich. He's been the building inspector over there for the last several years. Previous to that, he was the building official in Central Falls. He was also a builder for twenty-plus years, so he will be joining us on Halloween and moving forward, so
Happy Halloween.
He's already helping us out after hours and coming in and keeping us up and running in the interim while he's given his notice, so he's been coming over to do an inspection for us, reviewing plans as he can, so he's been very accommodating for us to get through this period, so, but he'll be on at full-time. He'll also be appearing here at our next meeting for your formal blessing of that appointment.
So, he's not here tonight?
It's not official until he's, yeah, so. Next thing is the, I talked last month about the citizen request management system that we're going out to RFP for. That RFP is out. We've had several companies already inquiring about it. We expect to get quite a few responses to that RFP, and our goal is to, it's a two-week turnaround, so we'll try to get something back to you hopefully by the next meeting for approval to get that system in place. And again, to remind you, that will enable all the citizens in town, all the council members, and as importantly, I want to make sure that patrol officers, DPW employees, and others that are about town have the same app on their phone, and they can identify issues, whether it be tall grass, whether it be potholes, whether it be trash on the sidewalks, trash in people's yards, buildings that are, you know, need minimum housing inspections, unregistered cars, all those types of things will be buttons that they can push. They can take a picture. It'll geolocate that picture and send emails to the responsible parties immediately, and we can make it so that they, they'll also CC myself and the respective council member in that ward, and then you can track the response and the resolution of that issue. So, I think this will go a long way to dealing with a lot of the issues that we've had and help us to track that and keep accountability, so we look forward to that.
I think identifying the problems around town is key, so this system, I think, is going to be absolutely fantastic, but I think, you know, responding to those
Yes.
is even more important.
Yep.
Because, and I'm going to have a talk with our new building official also.
I think we all should.
Yes, we all should. What I expect, you know, we've been, you know, at war trying to clean up this town.
For years.
You know, some weeks we're losing and some weeks we're winning, but we need to be more aggressive. We've put in place already, all of us, tighter ordinances to get it done, but now we have to be able to have the resources to do it, and I want to talk about that, too. And if we're all very serious about this, then we've got to look at the resources and see, do we need more to get it done? And accuracy. And accuracy, of course, yeah. Chief, I meant to talk to you before the meeting, but last night, we get the text messages when there's an active fire or a working fire, and I think this is a great tool, especially if it's in your ward, you want to know what's going on, but I received five text messages. Everything said 169 Lagris, which is the condos.
Six of them.
And I read on social media, it was eight Revere or Revere Street, and then I got an email this morning. So, I don't know how that works, if that's where people call in from, that's an active fire, or if that is
It kept getting dings all right in a row.
That was the original call.
The original call. Yeah, something's weird because at
I don't know why it came in.
At 6:32, at 6:32 to 6:33.
Six.
Unit E1, unit B1, unit E2, so to me, I'm thinking this is a major fire going on.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You're sending all kinds of crews out.
Unit E4, unit L1.
System in service January 1st. We still have some glitches with it. We don't know why that
Yeah, because it kept ding, 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 and I go, oh my God.
Like I said, it's a great tool. I love it. I mean
The original call came in, was 169
From, okay. Okay. That explains it. Thank you.
Next item, I'll be going to the West Bay Community Action Annual Dinner. I sent out an email a month or so back letting you all know about that. They're doing the annual dinner on Thursday. Manny and I will be going on behalf of the town. They're going to be presenting West Warwick with an award for our participation and assistance with that group. I just also wanted to express a thank you and a job well done to the committee involved with the police memorial, the event on Sunday, the memorial itself, and all the companies and donors that were responsible for that. I think it's a fantastic asset for the community now. It's a great gateway going into Arctic, and it's, it just came out wonderfully. The event was very well done, and I just think it's a wonderful community asset now, so congratulations to everybody involved with that. And on a similar note, the station fire, I sent out the emails to the council, but just so everybody knows, the opening, the dedication is delayed because of construction delays on the monument itself getting in there, and they don't want to do it until everything is complete, and I respect that. On the positive side, they have reached their fundraising goal of $2 million and are exceeding that, so that's very positive, and they will absolutely be completing that in the next few months, and they're looking at doing that dedication in the spring, so we'll let you know as soon as that date comes up, but it's great that they've reached their goal, though, and that's another, going to be another beautiful place here, you know, in remembrance of people that have lost their lives in town, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Just, I have one question.
Any questions for Fred?
Yes, I have one. Fred, and Dave, Dave's here, too. The number one complaint lately is Wakefield Street. It's unacceptable. It's ruining the citizens' cars. It's just, I understand they have to leave it for ninety days, which is a great thing. It protects us from the sinkholes and doing it right in the spring, but they had that same problem with the state road on Providence Street. I work with the rep. They got it smoothing out for when the spring came. It was nice and smooth. I understand it's temporary, but I'll plow's again, and Dave, I talked to Jim Jeremiah. He said he was going to have the company come back, overlay it again. It's unacceptable the way it is.
We will, absolutely.
I mean, that has, something has to be done with that, and me, of all people, I travel that road maybe twenty times a day. A lot of complaints are coming from people that cut through from Coventry, which that's probably half the traffic that comes, but for our residents in that section, it's the wear and tear on our automobiles that's going through is unacceptable.
The company was here last Thursday. They fact over it and overlaid the whole road.
Dave, did you go by there today? Did you?
They overlaid it.
Listen, it's unacceptable. They did a shitty job, plain English.
You want them to reclaim the whole thing now?
No, they don't have to reclaim it, but they got to smoothen it out. I mean, you go by, my front end of my car, it's destroyed. Dave, I understand, but they did a crappy job overlaying that road. I've never seen anything like it. Warwick, they overlaid it. You go over, it's smooth.
We'll have to call them again tomorrow.
Yeah, it's unacceptable, the job they did. Unacceptable.
We'll reach back out to them.
This is our vehicles. We pay for.
Alright.
They get the money and go back home. We have to live here. And nothing against you, I know. Believe me, I'm not taking it out on any of us in town.
David?
The only other thing I wanted to add was Fred, thank you. I reached out to Fred this morning while I was at work at school. I guess there was an issue that arose late last night regarding the Crompton Playground and some of the trash, and I guess one of the groups that was there or some people that were there unfortunately didn't dispose of their trash properly, and there were some broken bottles and some broken glass and just trash, which just could have simply been placed in a trash bin, so really it's more littering and vandalism combined, but when I spoke with Fred on the phone, he was very, very quick about it and told me that we were going to get a team out there. However, what I thought was so cool about this and the part that I really want to recognize is, you know, so much was going on on Facebook today, and obviously I wasn't able to respond in real time because I was at work, but by the time I got home, I had realized that a resident in the area had gone down and actually, early this morning, had beat our team essentially there to start the cleanup process and did a lot of the cleanup process themselves, and I just wanted to give this resident in the area a shout-out. His name is Christian Estramera, and I just want to say thank you to Christian, especially if you're watching tonight. What you did, it wasn't your job, but, you know, everyone in the area really appreciates it, and I really appreciate it. And then furthermore, as I'm sitting down getting ready to come to town council chambers tonight, there were more reports on Facebook of youth, actually, I believe his name, and I, not a hundred percent, but I believe his, I know his name's Jacob, and I believe his last name's James, rode his bike to the park, dragged a rake behind his bike, and then was raking leaves at Crompton Playground, so it was just an incredible day in terms of unity and how, you know, the community can come together using social media to try and get some really quick immediate change for something, so thank you to Christian, thank you to Jacob, if you're listening. If not, somebody else is, please spread the word to them and let them know that I thank them. And the only thing I want to add and the only question I have for Fred on this is, what kind of potential do we have or what kind of opportunities does the town have towards increasing? I know we have the new trash receptacles that are in Arctic, the ones that, they work with our automated pickup system. What kind of opportunities are there to have more of those installed at the parks? We know that, I know that those receptacles don't make people do it, and then I guess my follow-up is, are we able to, I know we discussed this in the past, install some security cameras in the parks, at least one, and then maybe a few signs that say, you know, this park is under video surveillance, because just that alone, I think, is enough to deter people from defacing public property.
I thought we had it in Crompton. I know we had, we did have a camera. I don't know if it's
Yeah, but I know we have the new system that's kind of being, that spreads across town, so I was just kind of, I just want to ask Fred, you know, what's the potential for that, and is it something we can look into and see what the cost would be, because
I think all the playgrounds, Dave, should have
Absolutely.
that security, because you do have some people that don't care about anything and that ruin it for all the good people of this town that enjoy it, and at a small cost, there should be maybe some grants or something. We spoke about it before with the destruction at River Point, and I think even if it's a small fee or whatever it is, I think us investing in cameras to invest in our
Absolutely.
I think it's worth it because it would discourage
I've been asking for it for a long time. As a matter of fact, just last week, I was talking, we were with somebody, I forget who it was, but we were talking about the opportunity with these new LED lights, streetlights, you actually will be able to attack cameras to some of these strategically, and my first request was eyes in the sky here in Arctic.
It was the Arctic Village Association we were talking about.
Exactly. That's where it was, the Arctic Village Association, last week, and there's all sorts of opportunity for things like that, and we've got to do it. We've got to invest in it. Well, not only that, we've got to protect our investments. We've spent a lot of money on a lot of parks over the past couple of years. Sure. You know, you look at it, Ray Silver, the basketball courts, soon to be the skate park, the tennis courts, you know, you're going to have your pier, your fishing dock down in Crompton, you know, the high school track, you know, we just don't want people, you know, we spend the money, and we think it's great that the community can use it. It's open to the public. We just don't, we just, like Angelo said, there are a few people out there that make a bad thing out of it, and we just got to make sure that we protect our investments. That's it. Sure, and I think once we do put these cameras in, I think the public
It's going to stop it.
I think the public should have the right to get in and view them themselves and maybe even help us monitor because
Certain cameras can be public access cameras.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Because let's employ anybody that wants to watch.
I remember talking to the chief, and the problem is, we can put all the cameras in the world, but as far as monitoring, it's very, very difficult, so why not let the public have the opportunity to help us out?
And there doesn't need to be a million of them. One, you know, one camera and a handful of signs will deter nine out of ten people from being irresponsible.
Jumping back to Christian and his group cleaning up the playgrounds. This is great. It's been done in the past, and, you know, it fades sometimes, like our graveyards. You know, we had a group cleaning it up, but this is fantastic. I actually messengered him this afternoon also, thanking him for that, and that in the future, if he wanted to call the town, and we've done this before with, with community groups that want to help, we might be able to provide extra barrels and then send a truck down and pick up the debris.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just fantastic. I encourage any, any group, any person in the community that wants to help out doing this. It's fantastic. We do have an issue with having resources and getting there quick enough, but as David just said, when we find out, you make a phone call, and we get a commitment by DPW to getting down there and cleaning it up. It had already been cleaned up, which is, which is great, too, but no, it's, it's great to have that kind of involvement from the community, and I hope it continues, and I encourage it. Thanks, Christian. Any other questions for the manager?
Yeah. I just want to pay a compliment to Fred with the hiring of a new building inspector. Building inspectors, as everybody knows, are very hard to come by. The last one that worked here was let go, had a job within days. Guys with the certifications and everything necessary to do the job are really hard to come by, and I think it says a lot as to how this town hall is run, that someone's willing to come from another job in East Greenwich and come here to work in West Warwick. It's a compliment to Fred, how this town hall is run, and the people you've surrounded yourself with in the higher-up positions here. Thank you.
We'll do a review in six months.
Yeah, yeah.
Top of position to fill. It's, you know, you get somebody qualified, then a bigger city of town picks them up from us, so. I know my ten years here, it's been very difficult. It's a thankless job, too, by the way. You know, usually you want to give somebody bad news or you're not happy with that person either, so. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, upcoming appointments?
Finance.
Finance.
Finance, I think.
Try to shut you up, Don.
Oh, I know, really. Good evening. Just wanted to share some information that Fred and I obtained on Friday. We sat in on a panel discussion related to the pension crisis that occurred and some of the resolving issues that have been done in various cities and towns, and one of the things that they highlighted was that although pensions have been addressed by some OPEB or other post-employment benefits, it's something that no one is addressing just yet, although we are. So, this is just some information about, from that discussion, but one of the things I wanted to point out to the council and also to the public was that the town in the last two budgets has actually addressed the OPEB issue by putting money aside in the budget. We've created an OPEB trust and happy to report that as of June, that OPEB trust is up to $1.4 million that is set aside strictly for post-employment benefits. It's in a trust. It cannot be touched for anything, any other reason other than that. We're going to continue to budget and have that trust actually grow, so in future years, maybe we can get some budget relief by not having to continue with the pay-go as we have with the retiree costs. So, that's a big step in the right direction. The panel actually discussed it. Colia Ayer-Fredy, who represents the Retiree Coalition, was there as well, and also recognized that West Warwick has actually been ahead of this and actually addressed the issue, and I felt it was something that was worthwhile to mention, and like I said, Fred just handed out the actual presentation that was provided, which has much more information, but the biggest thing is just the OPEB and the fact that we are actually getting in front of that potential crisis. One of the other things it does mention in here is the reporting requirement change that's going to be coming in fiscal seventeen and eighteen for the financial statements. What they're basically doing is, I'm not going to bore you with the details, but they're shifting from a footnote disclosure to actually presenting it on the government-wide statements, which are the high-level statements, so there is going to be this huge liability. It's going to be coming on to the financial statements at the high level or the government, government-wide, but will not be affecting us on the fun level, so.
Just wanted to mention that. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Date for combined, excuse me, date for combined town council, school committee swearing-in ceremony?
Fred and I had this discussion after the last council meeting, and we're just looking ahead. I know I have a kind of a hectic work schedule from end of October all the way through mid-November. I personally probably will not be at the November 15th council meeting and possibly the first, depending on my situation at work, but, so I'll probably be missing those two meetings, and I got to say, it's my first two meetings I've missed in many, many, many years, so hopefully, depending on what this election does, and again, all five of us are up for, well, Brian, we already know you're going, so if this is our last meeting, Kevin, I want to say it's been a pleasure serving with you, and good luck with your future endeavors, and I know you'll still stay involved in the community, but whether or not whoever it may be up here, I'd just like to set a date for the swearing-in so everybody would have an idea, even the candidates that are out there, and I think we can put November 29th?
Right, and speaking with Tim, too, it makes sense that we put it off anyway. That way it gives the Board of Elections time to finalize all the results, because if there are any close races, there might be recounts, there might be other things, so this will allow ample time for them to get the results to be official. So, yeah, it works well with the school as well, school department. This would be a combined meeting like we've done in the past. It would be held at the high school auditorium, and we'll just do both, swear in both the school committee and the town council at the same meeting, so November 29th, that works with everybody, and we'll go ahead and schedule that one.
So, again, November 1st is a council meeting, November 8th is election, November 15th is council meeting, 22nd, nothing, which will be Thanksgiving week, so thank God.
Exactly.
And the 29th will be us swearing in. It's going to be a very hectic Tuesday month. Anybody else have any concerns? Okay, it's been set.
Dave, we don't need to vote on it?
No. Upcoming appointments, juvenile hearing board, Pataux River Authority Recreation Committee, planning board, West Warwick Housing Authority, zoning board of review, development commission, pension board, which we just filled, technology committee, public comment. Anybody from the public have anything? Anybody from the council first? Nothing. Public?
I think the Boy Scouts are here to, I got a few calls over the weeks, and they told me that we're going to be here tonight on public comment. This has to do, and I'm glad Kevin and them guys stayed here, with the police memorial. The Boy Scouts have been using that site to sell Christmas trees for about fifty years, and if I remember correctly, when we first discussed the memorial for the police
we first discussed the memorial for the police, which came out beautiful, that the Boy Scouts could still use part of that property to continue to sell Christmas trees. Through different emails, I hear now that the Boy Scouts are not allowed to use that property, which I understand the job they did. But my argument, I mean, I was involved with the Boy Scouts quite a bit. Now I slacked off because Troop 28th isn't there. And I have these guys from 31 in Arctic. They called me because I was involved with them. And I like to discuss, I don't think that there would be a problem if they use it towards more like the FOP, like you always did. It was on the side. It was nowhere near the monument. So I'm here to listen to you guys and...
Just state, just state.
All right. Hi, my name is Dave Samos. I'm scout master for Troop 31 Crompton. We meet at Christ the King Church on Legris Avenue. Mr. Bedoula is right. We've been using the FOP for about 34 years, selling the Christmas trees. It's a fundraiser that goes directly to the boys. 100% of the proceeds go directly to the scouts. 70% of that goes directly to the individual scouts who work the trees and to help them pay for summer camp, which was $425 a scout this year. We understand with the memorial that there's a limited room. But we wanted to come to you not only to see if we could still possibly, either for this year, to use the memorial, or if there was another site that we could possibly use. With the timing, I need to get the tree art replaced very soon. We have been scrambling for a site. We do have talks with Holy Ghost. I'm trying to get a meeting with them where the festival is to see if we could use some land over there. Basically, it's really just a plea to see if there is any other spot we could use.
Well, I know, I, I don't want to cut anybody off. I know Sunday I had this discussion with Jody Kelly, I'm sorry, Mike. With Jody Kelly at the ceremony. And I know he called me back the next day. And actually, he was concerned too. And I think they understand and I think you guys understand what we need to do. And I know I've been driving around town, looking at different areas myself.
Exactly.
If you need help with the Holy Ghost, Angelo and I both know the president pretty well down there. We can get you in contact with him if you want to just meet down there. We also looked at, you know, I just commented to him, Crompton Playground on the grass side is owned by the town near the, near the Historic Society. It is fenced in. It's got lighting down there.
It's a big strip.
Christ the King, Christ the King Playground, the fenced-in area over there that, we also were talking about Factory Street, a couple of different places up there for you.
I think that's off the beaten path.
And I know, well, I know it's off the beaten path, but Jody came up with a very good idea, and I think Kevin O'Connell too, was to let you put up a sign at the location saying where your new location is.
Right. That has been discussed. And we appreciate that. It's really just...
Trust me, you know, I've been hearing it behind, you know, Angelo and I, Angelo's come to me, and I know he's talked to Councilman Drew about it. And we all feel, because I know that was a specific question that we brought up last year. And so we wanna, we wanna work with whoever and however. And whatever help you need, we'll, we can give it to you. If, if Crompton's, you know, something we could do this year, or wherever it may be, all the Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost is well lit. And it could be protected down there. The Crompton Playground, it is lit, but after hours, I know, the FOP has always been like a, you know, nobody could touch your trees because it's all four corners.
Fred, do you think the Crompton Playground here is feasible?
It's right across the street. I mean, it's somewhere where the people are used to go and, and buying that. And the other location would be, and again, you know, it's, it's taxpayers' property. It's, it's the townspeople's piece of property that you can't just say, we're gonna designate this and that's all we're gonna designate it for. There was another place that I was trying to work on, but I can't get an answer, was on Queesett Avenue where Gendron's is, the old Knights Nissian.
Yeah, we, we checked into that also. We called and wrote letters.
And I haven't got any response, have you?
We have not either.
No.
And that's why I think the Holy Ghost is not a bad spot.
Yeah, but again, Dave, that's off the beaten path.
No, it's not, Angelo. Because you gotta remember, I had an uncle who sold Christmas trees right across the street. And he sold a ton of Christmas trees at, at Noon's Fruit. He sold 50 to 70 trees out of a small little 10 by 10 lot. Like, and he always had to bring in a second shipment.
But if they decide they're not gonna use the FOP, I mean, across the street would be the ideal place.
Where's across the street?
The playground.
The playground.
Well, I mean, you're down the street across the street.
Yeah, I think that was one of our initial concerns, was not being too far away.
Right. And I mean, that's the closest that they are where they put a sign, we're at the playground.
They've offered, from my talking with them, putting up a sign, a banner.
Yeah, no, the FOP has been very gracious. They offered to put up signs and everything.
I understand. And she said you take up a spot. And I think Crompton Playground, as he just said, if you, if you look, there's an entrance, there's a couple entrance ways, there's plenty of parking on the main street.
I mean, you know, you guys are the ones that are selling them. You know what's feasible for you guys. We don't want to take away from you.
Have you talked to Christ the King about using them? There's a, a lot fenced in right there. Plenty of parking.
Not feasible.
It's not feasible?
Well, no, the, the one where the, where Joyful Illinois uses.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, the nice thing about the, where the FOP is, it's really highly trafficked. Everyone knows it's there. Being down there is just kinda, it's...
And, and I agree. However, we need, we need to find you a new spot. We need to find you, because realistically, come on, this is now a memorial site. And maybe, maybe, you know, and if, I know you've been down there, you've looked at it. If you look at it, in my mind, there's no way you're not, you're not gonna do damage just from the traffic going in and out.
Absolutely.
You know, really.
That's what we wanted to come to you.
Yeah. We need to find you a new spot.
We gave them a little brief saying, you know, we, we need to put you there at FOP. But then after explaining that, they just put a sprinkler system in and everything else. And if you start driving stakes in the ground, come springtime, we'll know they were, you know, as soon as the first.
Yeah, no, we can...
The lighters turned on.
The facade is brand new.
I can understand both sides of this. And, and it's, I know you're in a pinch because it's getting, you know, I hate to say it, Christmas is right around the clock. But, you know, I, like I said, I know I drove around. I know I spoke to Ed about it on Sunday and a few others. And members of that committee were actually thinking of places for you too. So that is close by. And I, I think if, what you need to do is let us know what you want to do. If you want to go down the Holy Ghost, or if you want to go down Crompton Playground, or Christ the King, let us know. We can assist you.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll do whatever we can for you, for you.
Yeah. And it's, you know, I had, I had recommended, initially I recommended Factory Street. It's off the beaten path. However, you've got thousands of kids that will see it every day. You've got, you've got hundreds of families that will see it every day. You've got plenty of parking. We'll, we'll, we'll adapt the lighting that's there already so you'll have electricity. I mean, to me, it's, it's, it's a, it's a possibility. Again, because you have all the kids there going home. Hey, Mom, they're selling Christmas trees over there. Let's go get one over there.
I have another question.
You know, so don't dismiss that location. That might be a pretty good location.
That juice is great.
Post 2 Legion, you're at four corners right there also, on the outskirts of the memorial.
Yeah, we had Joe through there too. We're a little worried with the memorial, how much room we would be able to set up without making a mess there either.
Well, there are police cars parked across the street.
That's what we were wondering about, if we could be there. But I didn't know how much the police cars had to be there.
Could we make some room for them?
Haven't parked, haven't parked, those aren't, are those vehicles used every day?
No.
Haven't parked, haven't parked up at Factory Street.
Factory Street, all in avenue is gonna give you more traffic.
I think so. We're gonna find a spot for you.
We'll talk and...
Why don't we do this, get with Fred? Fred's got his card.
Call Fred.
See what we can do to assist you. We'll do anything we can to assist you.
Danny, call me up. Keep me updated on it and we'll go from there.
We'll reassess and say, you know what, next year we want to try, you know, try as our second best one. We'll try, or next year, you know, and find that perfect spot.
And Kevin and Jody back there who are on the committee with, they can assist with signage or whatever you may need to do there.
Yeah, like I said, the FOP was awesome. It wasn't, you know, we're not here to try and say we want to be there.
Yeah, you're all gonna buy a tree.
Yeah.
Every police officer in West Warwick needs to buy a tree. That's right.
Thank you.
Good job, kids.
Jake, you got the mic?
If you use Christ the King Church, we could have one of the panhandlers hold the sign up for the, sorry. Serious, serious note. Upon walking through Ward 3, a lot of the constituents, Ed's constituents, you may have noticed this too, they brought up the people parking on the sidewalk on Patuxa Terrace, like dozens and dozens of cars parking on the sidewalk. Some of the people suggested maybe it was because of speeding. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stop signs there. So I don't know how you stop that. But the issue about people parking on the sidewalks in that street, if somebody's handicapped walking through, riding a bike, pushing a, pushing a stroller. My kid, my son is old enough to know, so I don't even think of some of those things. But I don't know if that's something that could be, you're not...
First of all, page down and bring to roll call, whatever you may have to do with that.
There's an ordinance that no, nowhere in town you could park on the sidewalk.
No, of, of course. But there's, there's like dozens on that road. So I just thought it would be worth mentioning. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Isn't it fun campaigning? Is it just fun?
For now, it is.
Any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Sir? Just state your name and address for the record.
Ron Kucha, 6 Ottawa Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. I have a question for you, Mr. Presley. It's been approximately seven to seven and a half years. We have not had a DPW director. We've had an acting one, but not a director. I'd like to know if you're gonna fill that position anytime soon.
Well, the council just appointed a, a new assistant. So Dave, for all intents and purposes, is, is the director. So no.
Does he have the qualifications though, to fill that?
Per charter, no. But per actual job performance, I'd say the whole council would agree that he's done an admirable job. So.
I think so.
I do.
I'd recommend you, you ask the employees who work there.
I've spoken to all the employees frequently. And I, I know some have issues with, with everybody in town. So.
Right, right.
My employees have issues with me every day.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if all your employees think you're great, you're probably not doing your job well. But, but I, I understand what you're saying. But absolutely, we've, we've looked at the position. Now, at some point, do, does a town want to hire an engineer? Yes. Will that engineer have some?
Well, I believe we need an engineer because that bridge on Factory Street is poured, or on a parapet, at one paw. You know, an engineer designed that. And we cut that bridge, cut rebar out of it. Grant me, we threw rebar back in. But the structure of integrity has been compromised because of a decision that we...
It's actually been inspected by DOT and NSA.
And that's DOT responsibilities, not the towns.
Understood, yep.
Or bridges. So we shouldn't have even been on there to begin with. You know? But if you only knew what actually went, goes on, you know what I mean?
I think I know a lot more than you think.
I mean, they, they think I'm the bad guy, but I'm not. Believe me, by far. And some issues, hopefully I can see you during the week.
You know my door's always open, Ron. We've spoken before and I'm always available.
So I'll come up, if available, tomorrow to speak with you, all right?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween, everyone. Right, Michael?
Walking, this is, this is the chance, this is, this guy, this guy right here, that was his property, right here, was complaining about, about the depression in his road. It's where, where rings, it's a youth puddle there.